Six o'clock, let's bring our meeting to order. Let's have a pledge of leaders to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Reverend Pete Perry from Mont- Montry will come up and give her invocation, please. If you can get behind the podium, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, I thank you for the invitation to bring this invocation, and I thank you for the vibrant community you provide, you oversee here and nurture here in Black Mountain, which adds greatly to our participants who come to the Montry Conference Center. I hope you will attentively treasure the work of the Montry Conference Center, for I believe our participants add significantly to the economic and cultural well-being of Black Mountain. As a minister in the Presbyterian Church USA, I am grateful for the protection our constitutional government has against any establishment of religion and for the free exercise thereof. That protection is good for us all. That means I'm acutely aware that the town of Black Mountain, particularly you, our elected officials, have a high duty to be diligent in guarding against ever succumbing to a subtle establishment of a particular religion in this town. We who are Christian are the culturally dominant religion in this town, but I know there are persons of other religions and those who practice no religious faith who are fellow citizens with us here in this town. Their religious faith or lack thereof is to be honored by us all, but especially by you, our governing council. Therefore, being invited as a Christian pastor to pray at the opening of your meeting presents a challenge. I offer prayer to the God who has encountered me through Jesus of Nazareth. That is the only way I am able to authentically pray. Yet I know others in this room and town do not share this understanding of prayer or even of a holy other one, a divine being. In offering this prayer tonight, I do only that; I offer it as my humble witness before you. In no way do I intend to impose my way onto anyone in Black Mountain. I also hope you, as a governing council, would never endeavor to impose the Christian practice of prayer on any citizen in this town. With that said, I now offer this prayer as you begin your meeting. Holy One, known by many of us in Jesus of Nazareth, known by many of us in other ways, we pray your blessing on these who hold office in the government of this town. Give them wisdom. Open their ears, minds, and hearts to truths they may not have considered, truths that might even come from those whom they never expect to hear truth. Keep them mindful that they are stewards of a public trust, to serve all the citizens of this town with special attention to our fellow citizens who are vulnerable and live on the margins of life. Renew in these public servants the zeal to seek the general welfare of this whole community. Set their sights on bringing Black Mountain toward the goal of being a fair city, whose foundations are mercy and justice, a place in which all may live in peace, in which all are honored, and in which no one will abide in fear. To the glory of your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate it. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of our children, has reached epidemic proportions with over five million children reported as being abused and neglected every year in the U.S., over 125,000 in North Carolina alone, with 4,716 children and 2,221 cases in Buncombe County last year. Whereas North Carolina faces a continuing need to support programs to prevent child abuse and assist parents and family members when child abuse occurs, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is the responsibility of all citizens. Whereas every child has a right to safe, healthy, nurturing environment free of abuse, whereas community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential. And whereas it is vital that we join forces with Child Protection Team of Buncombe County and Child Abuse Prevention Services Incorporated to reach out to parents and children to increase awareness, prevent child abuse and neglect, strengthen families, and assist children and families who have experienced abuse. Now therefore, I see Michael Sobel, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the town of Black Mountain, I call upon every citizen to observe this month, adjoining with our Child Abuse Prevention Services, with the Child Protection Team, and with community groups, and individuals in observance of this month with appropriate programs and activities. In witness whereof, I have in tears set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Black Mountain to be affixed on this 14th day of April 2014. I've got another proclamation. Now, this is for the litter sweep, which will, according to the proclamation, will take place April 26th and May 10th. If you were observant this past weekend, you saw a lot of people out picking up litter. We did it earlier this year, and I thank Bronte Lamb for heading this up. Proclamation, Spring 2014 Litter Sweep. Whereas the Department of Transportation organizes an annual spring statewide roadside cleanup to ensure clean and beautiful roads in North Carolina, whereas the North Carolina Spring 2014 Litter Sweep roadside will take place on April 26th and May 10th, whereas adoptive highway volunteers, Department of Transportation employees, Department of Correction inmates, and community service workers, local government agencies, community leaders, civic and community organizations, businesses, churches, schools, and environmentally concerned citizens, conduct annual local cleanups during litter sweep. And whereas this year, the town of Black Mountain observed the annual litter sweep on April 12th, now therefore, I see Michael Sobel, Mayor of the town, do hereby proclaim April 26th and May 10th as North Carolina's Spring Litter Sweep, and encourage all citizens to take active role in making our community cleaner and a more beautiful place to live and work. If Officer Daniel Denton will step forward, please. This is from the state of North Carolina's Department of Justice. North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, to all to whom these presents may come greetings, be it known in recognition of the attainment of training and educational objectives commensurate with the role of a professional criminal justice officer, and of personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina, the Attorney General and the Chairman and members of the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Training Standards Commission. Through the authority vested in them by the laws of the state, you hereby award to Daniel Todd Denton this advanced law enforcement certificate.
Just to add a couple to it, this certification is the highest certification in the state of North Carolina for law enforcement, so it's a huge accomplishment. It's based on training and education standards. We're very proud of Officer Denton to obtain that. This is the eighth, we have eight members in the department that have obtained their advanced certification. It's the highest in the history of Black Mountain, so we're real proud of them. Again, it takes a lot of dedication, a lot of hours, a lot of training, and congratulations.
And now we come to the citizen's comment. I'm going to read a statement here before we begin on this. We have got four pages of speakers, and each one will be given three minutes. There's a light over here, and at the end of the three minutes, if you haven't finished, I will politely ask you to finish. If not, we may let Officer Denton get a little bit of practice on his advanced professional career there. While the issues surrounding the source may be complicated, the process for addressing a zoning issue in Black Mountain is very straightforward. The Board of Adjustments, not the Board of Aldermen, must hear appeals of zoning violation notices and zoning code interpretations. Decisions of the ZBA are determined in a quasi-judicial setting, and their decision can only be overturned by Superior Court or the North Carolina Court of Appeals. North Carolina law prohibits this board from involvement in this process. We have, we meaning this board, have the authority to make changes to Black Mountain's zoning code, which may have the result of rezoning areas of our town, expanding liable uses or prohibiting uses. Under North Carolina law, though, we cannot determine if the zoning code has been interpreted or applied correctly. This is the role of the ZBA and the courts. Most of the people, I've just asked the folks that signed up to go ahead and check whether or not they were a resident of Black Mountain or not, which there again does not preclude them from speaking. According to state statutes, if you, because of the fact that we have a citizen's comment, anyone that wishes to address has the right to do so. You are not limited by your residence within the town or not being in the town. So with that said, I'm going to recognize the first one. Also, too, let me just mention, we have about 10 people outside that could not come in because of the fire code violation, you know, having too many people in here. So if somebody after they speak, if they wish to leave and let those folks come in, please do so, because the officers at the door for everyone going out will let someone come in to take your place. First one on the dock at the night is Lisa Milton.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Milton, 406 West State Street, right here in Black Mountain. Source and their supporters are here this evening to demand that the Board of Aldermen take action to allow Source to remain in business at 402 Montry Road. The law is very clear. The quasi-judicial decision from the zoning Board of Adjustment regarding Source's appeal can only be heard in Superior Court. The law does not allow for an intervention by the Board of Aldermen in any way. Any appeal by a quasi-judicial decision by the Board of Adjustment shall be heard in Superior Court. There are no other legal alternatives for appealing this quasi-judicial decision that's already been rendered. Zoning is one of the benefits that we're afforded living in the city limits of Black Mountain. I guess we can say it is one of the things that our taxes also cover for us. It must be applied fairly and equally to everyone. The issue of rezoning Montry Road has come up in the past and was voted down, because the people who live there, even though it's a busy street, it's their neighborhood, and they have a right to the protection that zoning is afforded to each and every person. The zoning code places the responsibility on each of the citizens, on the shoulders of each citizen, to determine whether their desired use fits within the zoning regulations for a piece of property. Before investing in a piece of property, it's the responsibility of each and every citizen to perform their due diligence, and this would include, it should include, paying an attorney to look at the uses allowed in a district of a piece of property you're considering, to make sure before you make that huge purchase, that you can comply and fit within the zoning code as they're written. This has never been an issue about the people and their business and the quality and an asset that they are to our community. It has to be looked at simply for what it is, which is a zoning issue regarding a piece of property and the permitted uses allowed in a residentially zoned district. I want to thank the Aldermen for remembering the oath that you took to uphold the law when you took your oath of office, and follow the law by sending the appeal to Superior Court. It, at this point, is the only entity allowed to decide this issue. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Don Wooton.
My name is Don Wooton. My wife and I reside at 112 Intofford Street here in Black Mountain. Honorable Mayor and Aldermen, I respect the offices that you hold in representing this town in which we live. I am here in response to Mr. Harris's letter the other day somewhat. We are a community of many, e pluribus unum. We are a community of rules and regulation, thoughtfully presented as laws and ordinances that we can respectfully live by. We have committees of volunteers and boards of representation to provide guidelines for all of us to abide by. I am here as a member of the community and a resident of the UR8 Zone. I attended all of the costly hearings of the Board of Adjustments relating to the town's conflict with the business referred to as the Source. Parking for residential use, as I understand it, is four vehicles per household. From testimony given at the ZBA hearing, it appears that the Source has a special parking relationship with the Unitarian Universalist congregation that allows them to extend their business further into the UR8 Zone. If every home within the same distance to the congregation asked for the same privilege, would the same opportunity be provided? Ms. Madden was asked by Mr. Romeo, the attorney representing this matter, what she would do if the Unitarian congregation denied her parking privileges. I believe her answer was, "I don't know." The answer is obvious, and I believe the ZBA ruled properly in denying the Source's operating permit. We have all made decisions in our lives, some good, some bad. In this particular case, a more appropriate business location would have made more sense. I believe the Maddens knew that the only way their business could operate was to use the off-premise parking that is not incidental to the neighborhood, and folks that have invested their hard-earned money to live in that area have suffered because of that. Many folks chose to ignore issues before this board. They trust that your decisions will be the right ones. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and offer my opinion.
Thank you. Bobby Ammons.
Thank you, gentlemen and Board of Aldermen, for this opportunity to speak. I'm not an eloquent speaker like those that have spoken before me nor those that come behind me, and sometimes I get emotional, sometimes I get upset, and I'm getting upset right now. I'll tell you why. I've lived on Montry Road for 43 years. This is my community. This is my neighborhood. I have nothing against the business. What my gripe is, is it's illegal, it moved in illegally, and it has no business staying there. I don't know who is in charge or who has the authority to close that business down, but I'm asking that it be closed down. This has gone on long enough, and I'm petitioning the board and anyone else that has this authority to stand up and do their job. You're hired by the citizens and the taxpayers of this community to do that. They pulled the wool over the eyes of some of our employees here in town and over the last board, and it's time for this board and those others that work in this town, in the government of this town, to pull that wool off of their eyes and off of their heads and to stand up for the laws and the ordinances and the statutes that we have on the books already for our community. What happened if I wanted to go into some of your communities and put my residential property and move a business in there? Say I went into Spring Hill or some of these other communities around here, and say I was going to start a home business, and I'm going to start a used toilet business up there, and if you want to trade in your toilet for a better model, come see me. Now, there's no, this is not, I'm sorry, but I, you may have degrees behind your name, and you may be better educated. People move into our community because they like their community and they like it the way it is. The next thing they want to do is change everything. They want to move in and force their will upon us. Well, they'll listen. I welcome you as a neighbor, and I'll help you as a neighbor, but when you come in and start walking on me and pushing me around and misusing the, these, this is, it's just not right, and we won't stand for it. There's a saying around here, maybe, I don't know whether many of you have heard it or not, but it doesn't matter how many degrees you've got, you can educate an idiot, what have you got? An educated idiot.
Thank you, Ms. Ammons. We appreciate it. Ms. Ammons, we were limiting it to three minutes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
But I think it's time to get this zoning over with on Montry Road. Leave Montry Road alone. Do not rezone, just to suit one.
Thank you, sir.
Individual.
Thank you. Sharon Stener, Cotton Creek.
Good evening. My name's Sharon Stener. I live at 44 Cotton Creek Circle, and I am a taxpaying resident of the town of Black Mountain. I'm going to be very short. I think there's one word that's such an important word, and I don't understand why we've had such a problem with it. In the ordinance, the word is incidental, and it seems to be the $64,000 question now. What does it mean? Webster Dictionary says incidental, happening as a minor part or result of something else. The Cambridge Dictionary says incidental, happening by chance or in connection with something of greater importance. The Oxford Dictionary says accompanying, but not a major part of something. Why was so much money and time spent on both sides of this issue? For something that was so obvious in the very beginning. Thank you.
Dave Landy.
When my mama would catch me telling stories to her when I was a young teenager, she would say to me a line from Shakespeare, "What a tangled web we weave when first we practice to deceive." I don't mean to speak poorly about anybody here, but I know a lot of you folks have come out to yell at the town board tonight. I think that you should understand some of the parameters here before you do that. The Source originally asked for a building permit that was specifically a residential outfit for a $27,000 permit. They then spent $88,000 building something that I don't think anybody can dispute is a commercial business. Now, we can parse the language of what incidental means, but it's very difficult to look at that business and say that this is a primarily residential situation. It's not. You can't make it be that. I think that the law is completely clear as to the state of North Carolina. The board cannot zone that as a spot zone. They can't say, "This business can stay, and the rest of Montry Road does not get some commercial." The board can't do that. This was set up in the original, it was flawed in its original methodology of doing this. Had this gone to the building inspector and to the zoning administrator in a proper fashion, and had they been told, "We'll look. We're looking to spend eighty-some thousand dollars here. We want to move our business," they wouldn't have told the Source that the Source could go there. They would have specifically told the Source, "No, you can't." At this point, there really isn't much left, except that this will go to the courts, and the court will uphold what has happened here. So it's unfortunate, but it is also true, as my mother would say to me, that you do wave a tangled web when you start in to deceive people. It should have been done differently, and it's unfortunate that it wasn't. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. David Madden.
Mayor and board members, my name is David Madden. My wife Robbie and I have lived at 118 Church Street for going on five years, and in that time, we have served the people of this wonderful town well, and we can be trusted to continue to serve them well. We are proud of our courageous son Blake and daughter-in-law Whitney, who are well-known for making fine contributions to the well-being of our fellow citizens. Our town government, and I'll explain how I can say "the" government in just a moment, in spite of the points, the legal points made, has knowingly made a living hell of the lives of these young owners of a widely respected, award-winning, beloved small business and of the life of their child who is here. They live here in the conviction that our town is heaven, as we do. At every stage in a year-long procedure, the town government has decided to intensify that hell, rather than admit and correct its own mistake. I'll make this clear in a minute. The process began when Blake and Whitney applied to the zoning administrator for permission to relocate Source for well-being to a house on Montry Road. The zoning administrator told them that they fit the requirements of the zoning code. That's all in the record. Trusting the zoning administrator, Whitney and Blake went into debt to buy and renovate a two-story house. With no changes having been made to the specifics of the declared application, the town manager shut down the Source on opening day because three neighbors objected, maybe more, but that's all we've heard about. Whitney and Blake then trusted the zoning appeal board to demand the rectification of the mistake that the town manager had made. The majority of the appeal board betrayed that trust by upholding the town manager's bad decision. It's not a question of Blake and Whitney wrongfully coming in and setting something up that was not legal or not said to be legal. The majority of aldermen betrayed that trust when Whitney and Blake appealed to them. Whitney and Blake next trusted this new board. Can I have some of the extra time everybody else has?
Three, three minutes.
To declare that they're, what? Can I have some extra time since everybody else got extra time?
No. We're trying not to, we're trying, Mr. Adams was the one that, was the only one that really went over.
Okay, well, as an educated idiot, I'll sit down.
Could we request people to speak on the microphone so that we can hear it in the center room, please?
Okay, thank you. Rosa Hilbert. In the interest of going ahead and letting you know where you stand, if you, this clock here will be green and then it turns into orange and then it's thirty seconds.
Minute.
It's a minute after it turns orange, you have one minute until then it turns red and that's the three-minute mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Rosa Hilbert and I have been a resident at nine oh seven Montreat Road for about twenty-five years. I am not a renter. I am a taxpaying property owner. I believe that the conflict between the Source for Wellbeing and the town of Black Mountain is a matter of zoning and use of property. It is not personal issues with the owners of the business. I spoke at the planning board meeting before Christmas and I am here to restate my opinion that I am not in favor of rezoning any portion of Montreat Road that is currently residential. I appreciate the efforts of the town manager and the staff who have worked diligently to find a solution, but I believe the outcome of this case should be determined in Superior Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, my name is Bob Hanning and I live at one ten Curly Street. I've been a resident of Black Mountain for about four years and as a matter of full disclosure, I should let you know that my daughter is the part-time employee of Source and my son-in-law was a acupuncture practitioner with Source before he moved his practice over to West I have therefore admitted bias, but what I'm here to speak on tonight is mainly what has disturbed me most about the whole process that I've observed. I practiced law for over twenty-five years in Wisconsin and I am somewhat chagrined by the way this whole thing has been handled here. I don't think it has been an honest, good-faith effort on the town's part and that has bothered me a great deal. It seemed to me that at one time, there was no question that, you know, the town gave the green light to the Maddens to go ahead and put their business on Montreat Road. The problem was that maybe you didn't have a professional in place, but that was an option you made for budgetary reasons and being penny-wise and pound-foolish doesn't justify the position that you've taken with regard to the Maddens. I think you can resolve this thing at the board at this time. Seems to me it's, it's a matter of law, almost universal, that one of the parties to a legal action can help reach an agreement to settle that. How to do it, I leave to your judgment, but I think that it's, all I can ask is that you have an open mind, keep your eyes and ears open and more especially, keep your hearts open to do the right thing. Source is a valuable asset that this community can ill afford to lose. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Wade Burns.
Mayor Sobel, Alderman, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for giving me a non-resident a few moments to speak. I live over in Montreat, special community, and I have been an architect certified nationally for over forty years. Most of my career has been as a town planter and I've been employed by the cities of Greenwood, Lawrence, Florence, Walworth, South Carolina. I've been appointed by commissions from different cities as planning and zoning, where I chaired vice chair of Board of Adjustment at Fulton County and Atlanta and a number of others. I have followed this case very closely, attended the meetings and so forth, and I want to say first that there's one person here that I think is being unfairly represented and that's Ms. Tipton, because as zoning is an area of my expertise, when she made her determinations in October and affirmed them in March, she was paying attention to the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the concerns about a business in a residential area are traffic and noise and inappropriate activity. And the fact that traffic on a state highway that separates two towns and the campus, two campuses of one college is insignificant for what's happening at the source. Traffic is particularly important because when you live in a residential area, it's very important that traffic not disrupt the safety for your children. Well, that's not a case on Montreat Road. It's also important that you not have cars that you're not familiar with driving down your cul-de-sac or whatnot. That helps with neighborhood watch and so forth. So, she was justified in, in making her initial call. Since that yellow light's on, it is very clear from what's in writing that she approved their application in October and affirmed it later in March. She then was overruled by the town administrator. Four months after Columbus left, Queen Isabella could not order him to return. Where you can make a motion or a decision is that because only the zoning administrator could say what the interpretation of incidental was, and it took in these counts, I said, that when the town administrator overruled her without asking her why she'd made the judgment, without looking at her file, without looking at the information, then that was a mistake by administration and you have the ability to address. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mitchell, Marian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, board.
Oh, and also give your, give your address, I'm sorry.
To Eagle Crest Road, Black Mountain. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marian Mitchell and I am here tonight because I support Source staying in business at four oh two Montreat Road, not just as one of the practitioners, but also as a fourth-generation resident of this town. My family has been investing in and supporting Black Mountain since nineteen twenty-five. Responsibility is nothing more than the ability to respond. It's not the blame game or the he said, she said, or getting overly caught up in right-wrong. The time for all of that is over. It's time to respond to this issue and I support you all as elected officials in taking the responsibility and resolving this matter tonight and keeping Source in business at four oh two Montreat Road. I want to add and just state, we are not interested in being involved in the rezoning issue. It's not about rezoning at all. It's about rectifying and course correcting what was set in motion over a year ago. So, I urge you to take action tonight to allow Source to stay in its current location. Nobody has to be made wrong for this to be set right. Most of life and life's journeys is about course correction. So, let's reset the course of action from this past year to keep Source in business at four oh two Montreat Road so we can continue to support the town, the citizens, the residents, infuse more business in from surrounding areas via our vast clientele. The location itself is being used right now for its highest and best purpose. It's affordable housing, it's providing employment, we provide service to the community, to those who are sick and in pain, we provide an avenue for entrepreneurs to survive and thrive in a difficult economy, especially because most of us are part-time practitioners who sometimes work only three and four days a month or just twelve to fifteen hours. And so, it is possible to find a solution and I urge you tonight to find this solution so we can all move forward together harmoniously and in service to our town and continue, to continue to create a thriving Black Mountain that works for everyone for years and years to come. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, board. Mayor Sobel, my name's Rebecca Ward. I know it looks like Ward, but it's.
It's Ward. People don't see me.
I'm Rebecca Ward. I am a practitioner at Source and I live at forty Beach Glen Drive, Black Mountain. My point is short and sweet. This discussion tonight is not about rezoning in my mind, it's about rectification, as Marian put it forward. I think we have a beautiful community of kind and loving people and from what I know, when people know better, they do better and people don't invest huge amounts of money into a project that they feel they're not welcome in. And so, this is where we trust our administration and our town officials. So, I want to emphasize that small communities, especially those like Black Mountain, really rely on the success of small businesses for their very existence. This town would not be here if it were not for small business, right? All residents, especially those invested in the community, really must be able to rely upon the word of town officials and administrators. I'll give some stats as to how Source supports Black Mountain. So, as for our clientele, sixty-two percent are residents of Black Mountain proper. Eighteen percent live within fifty miles of the town. Eight percent live outside this fifty-mile radius and twelve percent are out of state. That includes nineteen different states. So, these people come to Black Mountain, they stay here, they eat here, they shop here. I think a lot of my clientele from out of town really just come to go to Fresh after they see me, basically. That's what they call me. And some of our other fine eateries stay at Bed and Breakfast and support local shops here. So, really, we're providing a very quiet, conscientious and considerate addition to the town of Black Mountain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bantel Whitner.
Bantel.
I live at eighty-five Burt Ridge Trail in Black Mountain and I'm a practitioner at Source and I wanted to add to what Wade Burns started the conversation about in terms of the original reason that the zoning application was in fact approved based on the considerations of traffic and use of the property. Montreat Road is a state highway with an average of four thousand cars a day traveling on it. On a busy day, the impact of Source on that traffic is point zero zero six or less than one-tenth of a percent. There are already a number of wonderful businesses on Montreat Road, businesses that bring income into the community and reflect the entrepreneurial spirit of Black Mountain. There's a country food store, a nursing home, a camp, a yoga center, several churches, a spot-zoned commercial building before the gate to Montreat and a lodge that often hosts groups of up to fifty people. Clearly, the activity that happens at Source is healing and restorative in nature. It is very quiet. There is no, there are no loud activities that ever happen there. We do not want to rezonate Montreat Road. We're not changing Montreat Road into a commercial zone by being there. We are a small, professional office in a house. We got permission to be there and our physical presence there has a very low statistical impact on the road itself. In fact, we've improved the neighborhood by fixing up a very dilapidated house. Since the house is both residential and business, the house is used a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week for residential and about forty hours a week for business. That means the house is used for business purposes only about twenty-four percent of the time. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Today, I am looking for a hero.
And your address?
My name is Katie Hanni. I live at one oh six Curly Street.
Thank you.
I am, I am a resident of Black Mountain, obviously. I'm a mother of three small children. I am also a bookkeeper for two local Black Mountain businesses, one of which is Source for Wellbeing. I'm a believer in honesty and admitting when I've made a mistake. Raising children certainly provides me ample opportunity to make mistakes and fortunately to correct them. I believe that you have an opportunity tonight to correct the mistake that was made when Source for Wellbeing was given the stop-work order to shut down. If Black Mountain's zoning administrator, Jennifer Tipton, had told Whitney Madden, "No, we would not be here tonight." If Black Mountain's town attorney, Ronald Snead, had told Whitney Madden, "No, we would not be here tonight." If the town of Black Mountain's employees had acted with integrity and respect, we would not be here tonight. Whitney Madden asked the respected authorities and experts of our town if she could operate her business at four oh two Montreat Road. She was told yes. I have known Whitney Madden for thirteen years. I've worked for many years as her office manager supporting my family. She's hands-down the best employer I've ever had. I now work as bookkeeper for Source for Wellbeing operating out of my home as well as for another business in town. I depend on this income for my family. I am asking you, as my elected officials, to end this now, to come to a resolution or to enter intermediation to come to a resolution with the Maddens, to find a peaceful way for Whitney Madden to continue to operate Source for Wellbeing at four oh two Montreat Road, just like Black Mountain's zoning administrator and town lawyer said she could. Do not make this about rezoning Montreat Road. That is a separate issue. The politics of that belongs to another day. Today is the day that you right a wrong. Please be heroes for our town and come to a resolution with the Maddens. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Courtney Smith and I own two businesses in Black Mountain at one hundred East Ridgeway Avenue and six oh one West State Street. I'm, I'm up here to speak to you gentlemen and ladies about part-time practitioners. I am a part-time practitioner at Source for Wellbeing. We have only two full-time practitioners who only work thirty-two hours a week. The rest of us are well under that amount. One full-time practitioner, our practice is eighteen hours a week. I practice usually somewhere between four and eight hours a month. Two practitioners, twelve hours or less a week, and two practitioners, fifteen hours or less a week. I stand here not only as a practitioner at Source who will be forced to see I stand here not only as a practitioner at Source who will be forced to cease my private practice because I have no other place to go in this area that would only allow me four to 12 hours a month to work, nor any of my colleagues would have a place to be able to go to be able to practice their work. But I also stand as the owner of two businesses in Black Mountain. It has been a very disconcerting experience to overhear and have conversations with other business owners downtown and at chamber events regarding the precedence that this town and the zoning board has set by making a decision and then retracting that decision based on a few public concerns. We thought long and hard before opening our second restaurant, wondering if anything that we had been told in writing or otherwise would be reversed later at your whim. Finally, it is disturbing that in a town this friendly that you have chosen the path of litigation rather than mediation to resolve this issue. As not only a business owner, but a practitioner at Source for Wellbeing, and a person who uses Source for Wellbeing as my family's and my children's primary source of wellness care, I'm asking you to do the right thing. Choose mediation. Find a way to work this out and right the wrong that has been done when someone from the town said yes, and then that was retracted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick Owen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rick Owen. I currently live in Ridgecrest, but I plan to move to Black Mountain shortly. Through the course of this, I've only known Whitney and the folks at Source for two months now, but I was very interested in both the concept of moving into a residential area, because that's what it appeared to me when I came in. It was like, this is a residential area, it's interesting to have a business there. I liked the model. I liked the thought of it. And the fact that there's such a low impact on the neighborhood was wonderful. If you sit in that lobby and watch people come in and out, it's like sitting in a coffee shop in some regards. People come in, they know each other, it's very comfortable, and it's an easy place to sort of get around and meet with folks. The turnover of clients is very low, so there's a low impact in terms of people coming in and out and moving back and forth. My biggest concern, though, is the management of the town and the fact that I was very interested in opening a restaurant here next year. And so in listening to Whitney and outlining, I just happened to ask her what was going on, and it was like hitting the big easy button. She just went on a tear and told me all these details, and then she apologized backstage. And I was like, it was great to listen to, because it was informative. And I would love to move into a town and work in a town. This town is wonderful. My brother's been here for several years. I'd love to open a business here. But in order to do that, I've got to have confidence in the aldermen, the mayor, and also in your decision process. So I just implore you to wrap this up. And I'm not taking sides one way or the other, but just handle business as business. There's no pointing fingers. You can't fix what happened yesterday. Just move forward and try and resolve the issue. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Diane Douglas.
Good evening. I'm going to do something different. I'm an occupational therapist at Source for Wellbeing. My name is Diane Douglas. I own a house in Black Mountain, 98 Chestnut Hill Road, and I live in Fairview, 538 Dieleaf Lane. I'm going to read a letter that was forwarded to Whitney Madden from a neighbor. Her name is Maritriann, and it says, "Hello, my name is Maritriann, and I'm writing in concern about Source for Wellbeing. I live at 306 Montreat Road. I live two houses down from Source, and it has been a pleasure having them here. From my understanding, the location has raised some concern. I would personally like to say that there is no difference with them being there. I have lived at 306 for almost four years, and since they have been there, the neighborhood has been quieter. I have not seen any change in traffic, and if you didn't know that Source was a business, most would just see it as another residential house. I think it is a great place for Source to be, and I hope they can continue their services at Montreat Road address. It has been wonderful having them in our neighborhood. Sincerely, Maritriann." As an occupational therapist and a Medicare provider, I have been here for eight years and worked for Source for Wellbeing and have served this community to the best of my ability. I have supported my two kids as a single mom and would love to be proud of being involved in the Black Mountain community, which is my heart home. Thank you.
Thank you. Faith Barwick. Okay, thank you. Renee Graziano. Couldn't read that, sorry.
Mayor, Board members. My name is Renee Graziano. I am a chiropractor at Source for Wellbeing. I have operated my practice alongside of Whitney for about 10 years. I'm here to read a portion of a letter, mostly conveying a request by the Maddens. And let me say this, it is my understanding that coming to a peaceful resolution around this was offered and agreed upon, and so this is in reference to that. The Maddens and I respectfully request that you reconsider your position regarding legislative resolution of this matter. By legislative action when adopting text amendments to your zoning ordinance, the town board has clear authority and the power to resolve this matter without litigation. It is also important to note that, notwithstanding any termination of the stay agreed to by the consent order staying matter, the parties still have plenty of time to agree to a legislative resolution of the matter. The Maddens have always believed and expressed the belief, even prior to the hearing by the Board of Adjustment, that there were a number of ways that the matter could be resolved. The Maddens are greatly concerned that the town has once again turned to resistance and litigation rather than to resolution. The Maddens sent to your attorney of record several legislative options for resolution. They expected that he would convey all of those legislative options to you, all of the options. The Maddens maintain the belief that this matter can be resolved by clear communication and real efforts to find common ground. With reservation of the rights of the parties and without admissions, the Maddens respectfully request the list of legislative options to be placed on your next agenda for public discussion. In the event that one or more of the legislative options are pursued, they understand that there are notice and hearing requirements before there can be adoption of zoning text amendments. The Maddens continue to seek to avoid costly expense, protracted litigation for the town's taxpayers and for all of us and the Maddens. We understand that you have now hired another attorney to represent the town in the litigation. They hope that you will reconsider this matter so that we can again move towards resolution that is possible by legislative action. I and the Maddens thank you for your consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Blozan.
Heidi Blozan, 102 Fourth Street. Board of Aldermen, thank you. Come to an agreement to allow Source to remain at its current location. I, being a parent, know that parenting is hard, and I liken your job as alderman to parenting. Sometimes, we have to make a decision that not everyone wants. We have to be able to see the big picture, and sometimes we even break rules. Are you practicing reasonableness or law? You have an opportunity to effect change in Black Mountain. This is an opportunity, thanks for listening so well, this is an opportunity knocking at your door loudly. Change is inevitable. Be open to it. I am. Four years ago, I carried a petition to not have businesses on Montreat Road. My main concern was traffic and laundromats and restaurants creeping into the side streets. Today, I have more information. The impact on traffic from Source is about .006% on their busiest day. Now, put your big-picture glasses on, please. Montreat Road is not a neighborhood. It does not feel like a neighborhood. The traffic doesn't drive like a neighborhood. We all love Church Street and Dougherty Street. These are perfect examples of professional businesses and residents living side by side. The owners of Source asked town experts if they could exist at this location. The answer came back yes, not once, but three times. The town made a mistake. But this is an opportunity for the Board of Aldermen to do what is right, to embrace change, to do what the big picture begs, allow Source to remain at its current location. And by the way, my husband and I have not had to call the police because of late-night parties, barking dogs, or domestic disputes since Source moved in. They are great neighbors, and they have improved Montreat Road. Thank you.
Kim Barber. Maybe is Kim outside?
I hope everybody can hear me. I live on Tomahawk Avenue. I help to run a business in downtown Asheville. I go to Source for Wellbeing because they are wonderful people and great healers. I'm actually finding it kind of funny that traffic is an issue. I've lived in Black Mountain for eight years, and the only time traffic is an issue is when church is getting out. And we know that that's a pillar in our community, such as Source is a pillar in our community. Clearly, they help to support not only from a job standpoint, but from also a wellness standpoint. So I just hope that we can all just start cooperating, wasting money and time, and give our support as it was given in the first place to open a business and to maintain a business. And if traffic is an issue, perhaps we should reconsider where our church is located. I'm sure that that's not necessary, and I'm sure that we could come to a resolution. And I have all the faith that you all can do such. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Walker.
Hello. My name is Todd Walker. I've lived here for 14 years, and I stand here in support of Whitney, Blake, the Source team, along with the many people in our community who have been and continue to be served by the skilled practitioners at Source. I urge the Board to take immediate action to uphold the approval to operate at 402 Montreat, which was initially granted at the outset of this long process. I myself am a licensed acupuncturist. I worked alongside with Whitney. And just before that, I was a client of hers and later a partner at State Street down the road, and with many of the other practitioners. I can attest to Whitney's impeccable character in the matter of client care and business professionalism and community involvement from the time she opened her doors in 2000 here in Black Mountain. The biggest point, and it may be redundant, but it's worth making again, is that Whitney was indeed granted permission to operate at this address, 402 Montreat. And she did her homework, as I understand, approached other professionals, the town lawyer, the zoning administrator, and was given assurances and the yes, the green light, as I would take that myself. I can only imagine anyone daring to put themselves in those shoes who would come to the same conclusion that yes does indeed mean a green light, let's go for it. And why, after receiving that yes in writing multiple times, then having that confirmed, would Whitney or others on board her team have reason to take pause and probe this further? If it's necessary to probe that yes further, then what does this say about the competence of these town officials? And what position does this place any aspiring business in our town, as was mentioned earlier this evening? Obviously, the position is murky and confusing at best, and I truly hope that out of all of this, clarity is indeed reached, not only for Source but for others in a similar position. These town officials were sought by Whitney to carry out their jobs, and anyone who aspires to operate a business in Black Mountain needs to be able to rely on the employees and the officials of this town for their expertise. There needs to be accountability when mistakes are made. Certainly, I make mistakes every day as a parent, as a business owner, and I certainly hope that I'm humble enough to try to correct or to move forward when that happens in terms of hindsight. There's been plenty of hindsight along the way.
That's the three minutes. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Chris DeBeer.
Good evening, Mayor, Aldermen. My name is Chris DeBeer. I'm a resident of Black Mountain at 78 Vance Avenue. I come to you tonight to say that as a resident and a taxpayer in Black Mountain, I do find it disturbing that the takeaway message from the meetings that happened before, which I attended many of them, is that if you in good faith go to the town and you ask someone, "What are the rules? How do I follow them?", and you are given an answer, not once, but several times, including in writing, that you are then expected to not be sure about that, to hire your own lawyer because maybe what you've been given in good faith is wrong, and that anything that comes beyond that is then your fault, and you're legally responsible for any money that's incurred. I find that very disturbing, and I hope that you rectify that situation and take action tonight to show that if I, as a resident and a taxpayer, come to the city or the town and ask for permission to do something, that if I'm granted it, I can have faith that that will be fulfilled. Thank you.
Acha Turner.
My name is Acha Turner, and I have lived here 15 years. I own two houses in Black Mountain, 412 Laurel Avenue, and just purchased 102 Fourth Street. And I hate for a business like this, I think 15 years of doing good business and close just about this matter is silly. So I want you to reconsider... So I want you to reconsider this decision. I think these businesses are very honest and we love everybody that work there. My children enjoy, I want to be in Black Mountain. I want to live happily in Black Mountain. I want to be able to walk to town, to a restaurant, to a healthcare. So I think it's a very, very friendly community. So I want you to please keep Source where it is. Thank you.
Whitney Madden.
Hi, my name is Whitney Madden. Thank you, Alderman and Mayor, for giving us this time this evening. I'm the owner-manager of Source and the co-owner of the property at 402 Montreat Road with my husband Blake Madden. First of all, we know and clearly understand that you, as elected officials of our town, did not cause this situation. We are here tonight because we also know that you have the power, ability, clarity, and vision to fix a problem that has gotten so far off track that, as an entire town, we have lost sight of what the problem is. We are in this position because I had done due diligence. You know what, all has happened. I believe at this point it's been repeated. I will tell you that if Ms. Tipton had ever at any given point said the words "no" to me, I would not be here. If the town attorney's office had said no to me, I would not be here. We would have kept looking for a house or for a place. The one question that I have that I think has been lost in terms of part of the process is I know you had said that the process is very clear, that we were to go through the ZBA. What I don't understand is that we were not questioning or appealing Ms. Tipton's first decision. So I don't understand, I still to this day, and I've not gotten a response, of why we were put through the zoning process, appeals process, when in fact it should have been the neighbor complaining, that he was complaining against her first decision. So that entire process for me has a big question mark of the legitimacy as well as what happened during that process. We were told we could use the property for a residence and a business. We looked for two years in Black Mountain with three different realtors to find an affordable property that could serve our client needs. We did not find any that, and this is when our realtor suggested this alternative option at 402 Montreat Road. There is nothing else in Black Mountain that we can rent or buy that could work for us in terms of accessibility, affordability, and space. Source, a business of 14 years, has worked well because we have come together for care for our clients and administrative and overhead costs. If we cannot be together in the same building, then the entire integrative center is dissolved. We do not have a remedy to undo our investment. If we sell the property, there is more financial loss after the loss of the past year and Source dissolves. We put out of business, 13 practitioners and two employees would lose their job. We do have one option, and that is to sue the town, which is, to me, a complete waste of time, resources, and money for all of us. That is not what we want to do. We have no remedy for us as landowners and business owners in this town. There's no remedy for us unless you come forward tonight to make a decision to grandfather us in, just like the other businesses are on Montreat Road, to look at the four options that our lawyer has given, to work with the planning director and the planning board. All of these options are outside of our control. We have given this town everything. We have come here wholeheartedly investing our hearts, our expertise, our souls, our future into this community. And yet, we have been treated like villains for following the town administration's words. The stress of this debacle has deeply negatively affected all of our 13 families as part of the Source team and our ability to care for our clients, and added stress to our clients who come to us to relieve their stress. Our future is in your hands. I understand that one of the town's concerns is setting a precedence that a business can come into the URA zone.
Blake Madden.
Hello, I'm Blake Madden. I live at 202 Ninth Street. Whitney is my wife. First of all, let me thank you for listening to us ahead of time because I'm sure I'll be cut off as well by the buzzer. Tomorrow's tax day, right? And if all of us who are small business owners have probably got our returns in, we spoke with our accountants, we put our papers in, right? Because we don't trust the process ourself. The codes are written in English, but you can't understand them. So when you have to do something important, you go to an expert, you give them the information, and you trust that it's right. The zoning administrator in this town is not just one of many experts in her field when it comes to zoning matters here in the town. She is the expert. She is not equivalent to an accountant, but the actual head of the Internal Revenue Service. Her word, and especially her word in writing, should be enough for any homeowner or business owner to feel 100% confident. Okay, here's a brief history. Whitney and I were looking for a place, and you've heard all this, I don't want to be cut off. We went through all this, and what you have not heard and what the people who say we wove in a tangled web have not heard are the actual emails. I'm going to read excerpts, there's not time. I will give you, Mayor, copies. You can read every word yourself out loud, please. This is from Jennifer Tipton. I spoke with you yesterday, and I would like to, no, I'm sorry, from Whitney to Jennifer. Jennifer, I spoke with you yesterday. I'd like to make sure I understand you correctly. I currently own and manage Source for Wellbeing. I'm an acupuncturist. I want to move three full-time practitioners, perhaps a few part-time massage therapists, 402 Montreat Road. You had expressed that I could run the practice as a home care business. "Hi, Whitney," from Jennifer. The houses, if the house is used solely for the business, then that would not qualify as a home-based business. The reason I ask, you have to have a resident. Okay. Incidental was brought up there. The time Michael Begley was our attorney, he's the mayor, he would know about these such things, he wrote a letter to the town attorney, and he said, to, you're a town attorney, "In the absence of any definition for incidental in the ordinance, my conclusion would be that having a residential use of that property in and of itself makes the business use incidental to a residential use." I don't know, that's what he said. Finally, the last email from Jennifer Tipton to Whitney, March 4th. March 4th. "There is nothing in the ordinance that specifies the number of employees you may have in a home." She ends, "I do hope that this is a successful move for your business. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns." Jennifer. This is March 4th. Is this someone telling us we have just made the big, we did not understand what she said? Please, please think this through, because a lot of people are saying that we flew in under the radar. And if you listen to all the steps we took, all the people we talked to, everything we had in writing, can you, thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor. Boy. I'm a schoolteacher here in Black Mountain. I live at 205 U Street. I have lived in Black Mountain for 15 years, and I've been a schoolteacher in the area for 11 years. And I've also many, many times been called a very overprotective mom. So if you know where U Street is, every day when I pull out of my minivan with my kids in my minivan, I'm looking at Source. And I'm so grateful they are there. They have treated my children, they have done a beautiful job with that building, they are some of the most trustworthy people I know. I would drop my kids off there in an emergency. And I cannot speak well to the legal issues here or the zoning or any of that, but I can speak as a longtime resident and a schoolteacher and someone who would not ever put my children in the care of somebody who was trying to trick someone else into making a poor decision for this town. So I'm going to leave before the light comes on. Thank you.
Dickinson's the last name.
Kristy.
Koch.
I know my handwriting. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Kristy Dickinson. I reside on Riverview Drive in Asheville. I'm a part-time practitioner at Source. Every day, I see our lobby filled with people, residents and tourists alike. These are people who are primarily in pain, people who are helped by the expertise of a group practice like ours. Before I came to Source, I had been in hospitality management for over a decade, and I have some stats to share with you on wellness tourism. This industry is currently valued at $439 billion, which is up from $109 billion in just 2009. It is projected to grow to $678 billion by 2017. That is projected to grow 50% faster than overall global tourism. Black Mountain, with our healing legacy, is very well situated to capitalize on this growth, but we must consider mixed-use facilities due to our current infrastructure limitations. And we must trust the information of those at the town when they provide it to us. I chose to practice in Black Mountain over Asheville because of the potential that I see here and because of the needs of this community. Don't let the escalation of this case scare off small business owners like me. This is not about rezoning Montreat Road. It's about trusting the process and information of town administration. Make right the wrong that was done. Let's come to the table with some solutions. At the very least, let's consider mediation. Here I have a petition of 975 people. 299 of those are from Black Mountain proper. These people would like us to consider, would like us to stay at Montreat Road. Thank you for consideration.
Marilyn Sedansky, representing Rainbow Recycling. This is a time to shift gears, another topic. I'm here to announce several spring recycling collections to take advantage of, to help you with your spring cleaning and in general. And any time that you properly recycle, you save the town money, because the town pays to put trash in the landfill. So if you properly recycle, you save the town money, save yourselves money. On April 26th, at the Earth Day Flea Market Recycling Collection, Rainbow Recycling is having a collection of styrofoam and packaging like we've had before. Must be clean, no tape, et cetera. Packaging is a bubble wrap, et cetera. Those items need to be sorted and bagged separately. We're also collecting small appliances and metals and wire, computers for crisis, collecting electronics. Please refer to information for details. We are also hosting two collections of flower pots. May 18th, at the annual Black Mountain Garden Show and Sale, as we have done in past years. And we are also hosting a brand-new event, Lots of Pots Recycling Event, the following Saturday geared to small landscapers and nurseries, but open to the public. And that'll be held at the Appalachian Creek Landscaping and Nursery in Swananoa in 7 to 5. So that information will be out in the community. Please take advantage of these opportunities. Thank you.
Marilyn, could you please say, I didn't get it down, where the styrofoam, where will you be on April 26th?
That will be at the Earth Day Flea Market. That's right by SunTrust that the Parks and Rec holds.
Okay, just in that parking lot?
Yeah, public parking lot, right by the rainbow tax.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name's Mary Frances Brown. I'm a resident of Buncombe County and a business owner, and my home is at 217 Mountain View I want to say that I have known Whitney Madden for many years, and I can attest personally to her integrity and her honesty. I encourage you, as Alderman and Mayor, to please avoid further litigation on this matter that has already cost tens of thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars. And I ask you to please come to a resolution this evening to allow Source to continue in business as previously allowed by the town's zoning administrator and the town's attorney office, as already established many times this evening. Once again, thank you very much. Please do the right thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, fellow citizens. My name is Bill Chilton, and I live at 104 Street, Black Mountain. Just so you know exactly where that is, when you're coming up Montreat Road and you're headed north on Highway 9, there's the Source on the right-hand side, then there's a greenhouse, and then there's my house. Okay? So I'm really close to the Source. I see a lot of yellow here tonight, and I just want to say that I think the folks at the Source are wonderful people, and Whitney and her husband are also wonderful people. Unfortunately, they've placed their business in an area that is not zoned for their business. Zoning ordinances are created for the protection of everyone, homeowners and business owners alike. About eight years ago, my wife and I purchased our home through Gay Fox, she's a realtor here, Mr. Dan and Jean Riley. It was their home, and we purchased it. And we knew that we were buying in a residential neighborhood, and we would like the protection of living in a residential neighborhood and not having businesses 73 feet from us. I would appreciate, you probably wouldn't appreciate if I put a medical office the same size and the scope of the Source on one side of you, just one door down, and then put my parking lot on the property immediately adjacent to you. That's what's happened. By allowing the folks to park at the church next door to me, what they've done is they've sandwiched my house in between their business and their commercial parking lot. And the bigger issue that I have with this is that, you know, the zoning laws are pretty clear. There's been a lot of debate, and who said what to who and when and all like that. But if you look at the ordinance and you look at the map that's on the website, you'll see an orange section that says residential aid. That means residential. If you look at the red part, that's where the businesses in this town are, and that's where they belong. I'll just simply say that, Whitney, I hope your business does succeed. I hope it thrives for years, but I hope it thrives in a place like the Downtown Business District and not in our neighborhood, because even though we have a busy road that cuts through our neighborhood, we are very, very much a neighborhood, and I implore you to please protect our rights as residential citizens. Thank you.
Dawn Wilson, 200 Woodland, that's it. Woodland Court. Been there for 22 years. I appreciate this process tonight, that it's been orderly and conscientious. And I appreciate all of you volunteering, because I know this is very hard. I am here tonight as a representative of the CEC Committee, the Certified Entrepreneurial Council. We have worked hard to bring entrepreneurs into this town. I've already spoken to the planning board. We don't have enough office space for entrepreneurs. They come to the town and there just isn't enough light office use space, and we suggest... And we suggested to the planning board a rezoning from State Street up to the country store for... Most communities have a neighborhood corridor zoning, Asheville does, where there's a mix of residential and small office space, like accountants and attorneys and massage therapists. And this fits neatly into that, but that's something that the Entrepreneurial Committee would like for the town to consider. I'm also here as a realtor. I own a small real estate company. I sell primarily in Black Mountain. My little company sold 44 houses last year. It's very difficult to do due diligence if there aren't clear processes in the town for my clients to understand what they can and can't do when they move here. So I'd really like to see come out of this is a very simple, clear form or something, rather than emails back and forth and casual conversation. It needs to be clear, so people know what they can do with their business and their residence. And thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Bryant.
Good evening, all. Thank you for letting me speak. Good evening, all. What I want to say is very brief. I don't have a lot to say other than I would implore you to take the resources and knowledge you have about this and everything that's been provided to you leading up to this point, and make a decision that will have the Source for Well-being remain at 402 Montreet Road for its benefit it brings to the citizens of Black Mountain and those that come here, not only for the beauty and the community that's here, but also for the benefits that the Source provides. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Melton.
Cheryl Milton, 202 Mountain Street. I had no intention really of speaking tonight, but as I stand and I listen to each and every one of these people talk about the fact that Whitney's a great person, it's a great business, those are all true facts. I've known Whitney since the second day that she came to Black Mountain when she lived on Pine Street with her first husband. I think what's overlooked by each of these people is that, according to our own code, a healthcare practitioner's office cannot operate in any residentially zoned area. A massage therapist is a medical practitioner, according to our code, as is an acupuncturist, as is a chiropractor. So that means right there that it can't be just because of what they are. It isn't say that there's anything wrong with what they are, it's just not the place. The, the next thing is the fact that you take Joe Tyson's building at 102 East State Street, that dirt is valued at 1.67 million dollars. The dirt underneath Whitney's house is valued at 220, 1.67 million dollars per acre. The dirt underneath Whitney's house there at 402 Mount, Montreet Road is valued at 224,000 dollars. So how is it that we then say, well, we can have commercial places, and why is it that Joe Tyson or Lisa Milton that owns on West State Street or anyone else who owns commercial property in Black Mountain is going to want to pay four to six to eight times the value of their dirt versus someone who's doing, doing commercial work in a residential area? She said herself tonight, she has 13 practitioners and two other employees. That's 15 employees. That, if you look around as far as the businesses that we have in Black Mountain, that's a decent-sized business. Again, it's a business. Our own code states that the home occupation, the occupation is residential for residential purposes by its occupants. Yes, she has a lady who lives there at least some of the time. The fact that she talked to Ron Snead, Mr. Snead very graciously informed me one night when I was up here and asked him a question very specifically about town business, that he was hired as the town's attorney. I might not have liked it, but it was the truth, and that was exactly the answer that I should have gotten. As is, why is it that she felt that calling up for free information would give her the right to be somewhere when in fact, he wasn't her attorney? He is the town of Black Mountain's attorney. Had I been Snead, I might would have said, I am the town's attorney, and I can't give you any information. But nevertheless, the, the fact is that the North Carolina law states that a building inspection must be done on a commercial piece of property. We've had no building inspection. We've had no fire inspection. So you gentlemen tonight can in fact be responsible if something happens in that building.
Thank you. The last one that we have here is Alan Arcand. Arcand.
Mayor, Board of Alderman, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Alan Arcand. I live at 304 Ninth Street, the same block that the Maddens live on and that Mr. Settlemeyer lives on. I sat through all the meetings with the zoning board for the Source. I saw all the evidence. I'm not going to reiterate what was already said tonight. I think it's a matter that the board should be able to resolve without going to court, without spending more of our taxpayer money on attorneys and on court fees. We have signs when you enter the town that we're an entrepreneurial town. And to treat an entrepreneurial in this fashion is very damning for us. I mean, the Maddens went through the process of getting an approval. There's emails, as you've heard and seen, and then later on, they were told they had to shut down when they opened. I think you all can remedy that tonight. We don't need new zoning on Montreet Road. But something should be able to be worked out with the Maddens and the Source between the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then. That concludes the citizen comment. We now have the communications from boards. We have communications from the Recreation Department. Casey Con.
Mayor, Board, thank you guys for giving me the time to present to you guys tonight. Let's see, there we go. Athletics, athletics report. This is our semi-annual report, so this covers from October through March. Our youth indoor soccer program this year, we had 170 participants. That's the largest participation we've ever had in our indoor soccer program. And as you see on the next line, the youth basketball, 130 participants. This is the first year that soccer has outpaced basketball here in town. So it is a growing sport. We did, did have 13 adult basketball teams, 32 participants in the three-to-five-year-old Start Smart Soccer Program. The Start Smart Basketball Program, 11 participants. Adult softball, six teams, and adult dodgeball, six teams as well. Some highlights from the health and wellness. We had 20 participants in the employee wear red day, 30 in the wear pink day. That was in October. We had four of the super lunches. That was for employee wellness, cooking ideas, trying to get people to try Brussels sprouts. Also, the Spring Into Action Program is, is going on right now. I think we have, we ended up with more than 14 registered participants, but when I turned this in, we had 14. I think we have about 20 currently. Community garden, we have 77 registered gardeners this season. We donated 11,000 pounds of produce last year, 2,500 pounds of food that were donated, almost 2,000 hours of volunteer time that was used down there. We had, between the gardeners and the volunteers, we had 412 people participate there. $7,000 in donations and grants for the garden. We also have a garden club that's at the Black Mountain Elementary School. It's an after-school club. We have 16 kids in that. We've got a little garden over there at both of the schools, at the primary and the elementary. And also Diana and Jill presented at the, at the State Parks and Rec Conference. They, they did a presentation on our community garden there. And one of the really cool things that we just found out in the past week is we turned in an application to present at the National Conference, the National Parks and Rec Conference in Charlotte this coming October, and we got accepted to that. So they'll be presenting at that conference as well. People will be coming from all over the United States and, and listening to the presentation on our little community garden here in Black Mountain. That's pretty cool. Senior activities, we've had, you know, consistent participation in the senior hiking group, averaging about 10, consistent participation in the lunch site, 21 people there. Good participation in several of the exercise classes that we have there. We have got a chair exercise class, a yoga class, and we're averaging about 10 people for each one of those. We had six van plan trips, and those go to, you know, various things throughout the community. Some, you know, a couple of the trips, we went, visited a couple breweries in town and a couple other places like that, the things that they're interested in checking out, so. Special events, we had 204 people at the Valentine Race this year, which was up. We added about 40 people from last year. Circle of Lights was well-attended this year. It was nice weather after the parade, so it was, it was very well-attended. And the Halloween Carnival was the mini Monster Fest this year. We actually moved it from the Carver Center over to Grey Eagle and the, the area over there outside of the fire substation. And it was very well-received over there. We had good participation. We had, actually had so many people show up for it that we started running a shuttle from, from the ball fields to get people over to attend it, so it was very well-attended as well. Here's some numbers on the Grey Eagle Arena. Our total expenditures, this was as of March 31st, again, 13,029. Total revenues of 14,095 with 148 rentals. And so, you know, we expect, the, the rentals actually turn a little bit better profit than the programs that we run there. And so we expect those numbers to improve over the, over the next couple months to the end of the budget year. Some of the upcoming things that we have over the next few months. The pool will be open Memorial Day weekend, which I believe is the 24th of May, 23rd. Anybody helping, Calvin? Yeah. Let's see, so we'll have swim lessons there. We'll have the swim team. We'll be back again this year. We'll also be doing some adult exercise classes there as well. The Earth Day Eco Flea Market will be happening on, let's see, the weekend after Easter. Another one of the things that we'll be starting here in the next couple months is our CAPRA certification, which is the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Rec Agencies. So we want to become an accredited department. There are 17 accredited departments in the state of North Carolina, and there are only, I think, 100, I think about 140 nationally. And we will be the smallest department that'll be accredited, so we'll be starting that over the next few months. We'll have some youth sports camps, soccer, basketball, and tennis. And we actually just confirmed some lacrosse camps that we'll be running this summer as well. We have a senior trip that will be going to St. Augustine, Amelia Island, Jacksonville, North Florida area. That'll be running the first week, first full week of May. Adult softball will be getting cranked up around the first of May as well. And the Black Mountain Summer Adventures, which is our summer camp program, we'll run that for eight weeks this summer, and we already have two or maybe three weeks that are full on that, so. Anybody have any questions about anything?
Very good. Thank you for your work on that.
Casey, before you go, could you give us an update on how the fundraising is progressing for the match on the Live Harper Park over at the...
We've, we've applied for a couple grants. We're waiting to hear on a couple of those. We have received one from the county to pay for the borders and the surfacing. And then we've raised about, I think around $3,500 from private donations. And we're still about, we're looking like we're going to need about $6,000 more to get that, that project complete. So we'll be hoping to, to get an article in the paper in the next week or two. We've got our design picked. We've got our company picked. We're, there's a couple people that are kind of haggling over colors at this point, so you know how that is.
Well, thank you, and I just wanted to commend you and the staff again for the, the event this last weekend with the Easter eggs. It looks like you had outstanding attendance for that, and there were a lot of very happy parents and kids as we went down there. So thank you for the good work.
Thanks. Yeah, there were very few tears, and that's how, that's how you measure the success of that, so. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll listen from the Public Service Report. Jamie.
Evening, Mayor and Board. This is Public Services' biennial report from September to February. And I will go ahead and apologize for the pictures with the snow in them, because I know everybody's ready for warm weather. But our work orders completed in Streets and Parks was 1,152. Water was 13, 31 with 33 leaks. Our water cutoff connections was at 446. Sanitation at 78 with a total of 2561.
Back up on that one, there. That's the fire department in the lower right hand. And that is, are you just putting in a French, an outside French drain on that one?
That is. That's actually, that's a real swampy area in the back, and it's been a, it's been a troubled area for a while now. So when we caught some dry days, we actually bought the material, went in and, and put pipe and French drain and...
Okay, now does that, now does that pipe tie into the drainage pipe that's, that is, that is behind the fire department?
It does.
And it goes on down to the, through Richmond Boulevard?
Yes, sir, it does.
Have you found much water coming out of that, or have you...
Actually, it's carrying some water. Of course, it carries more, you know, when it rains. But the, the French drains has been very productive, like when we installed them around the tennis courts. They work very well, so.
So did you notice anything on the inside of the building, I mean, the fact of less water getting into the basement out there?
Diane, I really couldn't answer for. The, the fire department will probably answer more to that one, but I've not had any complaints or heard anything about it, so I'd assume it's working well, so.
Thanks.
On our water system, the water usage was around 78 million gallons at 430,000 gallons a day. Our water loss was 32.6 at around 211,000 gallons a day. So the water loss was down a little bit, so that's always good. Our water system projects, Carolina Heights Project, where the water pressure assessment. Everything's complete, except for we are working on a cross-connection where we're going to try to tie two six-inch lines together from Montreet Road to Norfolk Road, which in turn, we had thought that some, just some minor valve adjustments would do the trick. But looking further into it, the cross-connection would probably be the way to go. Because what it'll do is it's going to transfer the pressures due to elevation from the Black Mountain Estates tanks. It'll take that pressure off a Hennfield tank, which in turn should create more pressure at Carolina Heights. So this project is scheduled to be completed around the first week in May. That's what we're shooting for, weather permitting, so, so we look forward to getting that project done. Our GEIS GPS mapping, we're at about, right at 1,800 meters located. Of course, the lines, hydrants, and valves have been done. Our water capacity assessment, where we replaced two pumps in, in the watershed. The two pumps we replaced probably produced 25,000 to 30,000 gallons more a day. So that's looking good, and, and we're going to look into replacing two more... that's looking good, and, and we're look, gonna look into replacing two more this year. And see if we can't keep doing that. And of course, a lot of them's thirty years old, so when we replace them, it's, it's just like our water meters, they become inaccurate, they don't produce the amount of volume they should, so, so that's proved to be working well, and, so we look forward to that. Replacing water taps, of course, everybody's probably seen where we've made the cuts across State Street, and what we're doing there is a lot of them taps are anywhere from thirty to forty years old, and we've run into some that you can't even buy parts for or tools to even fix it, so we're just replacing every one of them, because the good news is, I sat in on a, on a, a meeting with the DOT, and it is scheduled to be repaved this year. And I know that's been said in the past two years, but I think it's gonna happen this time, so, but don't hold me to that, because the budgets ain't cleared yet, but we're gonna keep replacing them just in case it does, and that should be sometime maybe around in June. So we're getting started on that. Our hydrant testing was complete. We're in the process, Mark Watts in the process of going around painting all the hydrants and renumbering, so that was completed. On our infrastructure projects, a lot of this is just normal stuff we do when we get the chance, the weather permitting, on storm drain repairs and replacement. I know this year, because of the town squaring stuff, we had some problems in the rightaways that needed to be fixed, so we replaced some storm drains and some culverts and got all that fixed. We've done stormwater ditching, culvert replacements in several, several areas. We've had several tree removals, which is pretty standard, depending on what type of year and the conditions that we have far as weather, and trimming rightaways. And I had the French drain on this page actually added behind the public safety building as part of that drain, them drain as part of it, so. On our parks maintenance, this is one that, that the guys is very proud of, and I was proud of them on it, like, because they really put their heads together and done a good job. If anybody's been to the pedestrian bridge under I forty over at the park, it used to be a wooden bridge, and every time it flooded, it would wash sealed up under it, and it would bow it up, and there was really no way to fix it other than just tearing it out, which would've been very expensive, so. A lot of the landscape guys that I got, it's very talented, they put their heads together and they done what they call a dead man. There's nothing bolted to the inside of that bridge or anchored in any way. It's solid as a rock, you can drive tractors, cars on it. It's, it's mounted with the lights. The railing was part of the old bridge, which is like a fiberglass, so it never wrought. But the good thing about it is it's got geomatte material under it, so if it ever does flood and wash it out, we can get in there with the machine and backfill it with sand. Sand's thirteen dollars a ton, it's twice as cheap as having to rebuild, and it, and you can actually maintenance it, which is good, so they done a real good job on that. And we installed French drains around the pavilion, the way we done behind the public safety building, but we put it all the way around the pavilion and several places throughout the field that held a lot of water, and that seems to be working really good. We installed new lights at the Cherry Street Restrooms. Come to find out, when you cut the switch on in the bathrooms, the outside lights stayed on constantly, so we, we finally figured out why they was burning out, so we went in and put photo cells on them. So now they're sep, well, they're separated, so at night they only come on, the mornings they cut off, so that, that's good, that's gonna save us some money. We, we finished insulating some more pipes at Carver. We put in, and this was a project we done and completed, and put in new water lines at the pool. The pool's completely been refurbished, because every year, there was no insulation inside the walls, and it was copper lines and sweated fittings, so the water would freeze and bust, and when it, before the time it come for inspection, we would spend several weeks just fixing leaks, cutting water on, fixing leaks, so that's something we're really excited about. Them problems should be solved, so the whole pool has been done in pecks, and if you don't know what pecks is, then it's not supposed to crack or, or fail when, when water's left in it and it freezes, so we got that completed. We got the ball fields ready for ball season, and if you're looking at them pictures, that top picture, I'll just give a briefing about that. We had some vandalism down there, and it was way worse than what that picture looks like. I mean, there was nothing left, bases, pitcher's mounds, nothing, so we completely had to rebuild the whole field, pitcher's mounds and all, and if you look at that bottom picture, it looks just as good as it ever did. So the guys done a real good job on that, and the good news is, is the police department done an excellent job, and I'd like to recognize them on that, because the people was actually caught, and I know there's a lot of footwork put into it, and we actually got three thousand dollars of our money back, so. That was a good thing, so. So if you're out there and you see any of this going on, I'd love for you to report it, because it, it happens way more frequently than what it should, but, but there's always good comes out of it somewhere, so we, we was proud of that. And we done some parking lot maintenance, regrabbed the parking lots, we got our mowers ready for the season, and we had all, we winterized all of our locations as far as community gardens, rec park, pool, all the wellheads, meters, Gray Eagle Fountain. We had all that winterized. On our administrative projects, sidewalk replacement and repair, this is one that, that I was glad to get done, and I know several emergencies downtown was, is, we replaced some, some bad sidewalk on Laurel Circle, South Laurel Circle, Cherry Street and State Street. The Cherry Street and State Street was actually a brick and curb, and the brick was very unlevel, and we had several complaints past couple of years about people tripping and stuff, and it was a trip hazard, so we budgeted the money, and if you've not seen it, it looks really good. They, they, it took a lot of time, and, and it looks, it looks as good as if it was just done, so. All them bad areas are complete, that was capital projects, that's completed. Montry Road Sidewalk Phase Two, we had ten, about ten signatures to gain. I talked to a lady last week, and along with Anna and Jesse Gardner, and I think we're down to, we only have to obtain about four more, so we're looking really good on that, and we're getting positive responses back from it, so that's gonna, that's gonna be another step towards getting towards the Montry Gate, so I'd like to thank everybody involved in that, and Anna, she works very hard on getting them signatures, so I'd like to recognize her on that. Two dams emergency action plans, the Army Corps Engineers. The emergency action plan has been completed for some time now. I know it sounds like a broken record, because every report we get up here and give, we're always waiting on the next step, but we're actually waiting on the permits to tell us what we can do as far as construction, and I know that the engineer has actually been working with the state dam safety engineer who makes the final call, and he was supposed to talk to him last week, and we're just waiting to see what our status is on permits, so as soon as we get the word on that, then we'll start making dam repairs as necessary. I know during the winter, a lot of things slow down, and you get a lot of inside work, and, so we done a lot of work on our building. We completely refurbished both bathrooms at the building, we completely replaced the fence around the building, put new chain link fence up, and so it looks really good. We replaced all the lights, all the photo cells, got that complete to try to keep our facility up. We implemented eight-one-one locating service, and, and I would say this is partly due to some of our water percentage loss going down. We done three hundred and twenty-eight since this thing started, and, and it's really, we don't have to get up at two o'clock much in the morning anymore where somebody's bored through a water line, so that used to happen quite regularly, it don't hardly ever happen at all now, so it's really been a good, good thing that we've done. On our snow removal, I know we had quite a bit of snow this year, and we, we had some failure on, on, mechanical failure as far as vehicles and stuff, but the guys worked really hard, they kept the stuff running, and, and they done a really, really good job clearing the roads. We restocked, we used ninety tons of material. To restock, it cost us forty-six hundred dollars, so that's not bad, and of course, that's power bill fund, so that worked out really good, and we're restocking, ready to go if it was to come again, but I hope it don't, so. So this is my favorite picture of the whole report, because that lets me know at the time I done this, that spring was around the corner, so if you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
We don't have any questions, but I do want to say this, Jamie, I'm so proud of the, the town working with the state and trying to get ahead of when they come in and repave the, the, the road and surfaces, because one of my pet peeves, even before I was on this board, is seeing them pave brand-new pavement, and then the next thing you know, we're digging it up to put this or that, or replace something, a drainage line. I know that you are working with, with Bob Watts to get some, the sewer moved up and done quicker, and getting these, these new taps in, and I commend you and Matt for that.
Like I say, it, it's not a one-man show on anything here. The town as a whole is a team, and it's as much fires, as much police, you know. Once again, I'd like to thank the police again. I know you put Daniel Dent, and he received a award tonight. I don't know how many guys that's been out there doing them taps, it's about been run over, and I know he's pulled a lot of cars, but I can also say in his defense, it's been self-deserving when you're running sixty-five in a thirty-five. So, you know, just be mindful of them guys that's out there, because, you know, they got families and kids they want to go home to, and I know everybody's in a rush, and it's a busy day, but sometimes just a couple of extra minutes can mean a lot, so, that being said.
Jamie, I just wanted to say thank you to you and to Matt as well for your quick attention to the, the issues that were brought to our attention with the bathrooms down by the lake and getting that process started. And then, you know, the picture in this presentation that I think speaks volumes to the dedication of all the town employees, is that one in the water system slide, where it's probably a balmy thirty, and they're knee-deep in the water in the top right-hand corner fixing that line?
Well, the bottom right-hand corner where the water's spraying up, and them guys are standing there, I remember, because I was standing there taking that picture, it was a wind chill of nine degrees that day, so I take my hat off, they're a good bunch of guys, and, and they're, and they're passionate about their job, so they do a good job.
Jamie, let's ask a couple of questions. On the GIs mapping, there were, are we five percent, twenty percent, eighty percent done on that?
Well, the GIs mapping, as far as the water system goes, I know we've been having some trouble here with, with some of the, the database stuff, and Josh has been working with us, because he's really good with the GIs, and we're looking at some different, different stuff that we want to implement to make it move along faster. But as far as the GIs as a whole, it's really pretty unlimited where you can go with it, I mean, but as far as the water system, we'd probably like about fifteen hundred more meters, and then we'll just take it to the next step where we want to go.
So that'd be about, we've got roughly then about fifty, sixty percent of it done then?
I would, I would say so, because what happens, not only is he locating meters, but as we go out and make taps, or we fix water leaks, anything that's involved with water is entered into that system, so he, he'll go out and locate a couple of days, but then it takes him a couple of days to enter the stuff, because it's pretty time-consuming entering, because you just gotta set in front of a computer, and when you got some database issues, you're pretty much at their wheel, but when it's working good, it's going good, so, but we want to make it better.
Okay. On the Montry Sidewalk Phase Two, and where will that end, if you could tell the?
That will end at East Street, which is...
At East Street, okay.
At East Street, which is, it's a good section of sidewalks, a little bit further.
For those, for those that have lived here for a while, that's the old Max Tweedy store. It was up there on East Street.
Right, so, you know, if we can, if everything's going good, it's just every phase from here on out will be harder and harder as far as construction goes, but, but we look forward to getting it done, and it'll be a whole lot safer for people traveling by.
Thanks for staying on top of it, especially in the snow. That was, y'all did an excellent job on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, good consent agenda, Matt.
Yes, sir. And if, if you would, I would request that, what, the last item on here was approval of the termination agreement with, with Billy Casper-Golf. I would request that we pull that off of the agenda for tonight, not because there's, the, the principle of the, of the agreement is still the same, the money, the timeline. There is just, there's one hang-up I think they were waiting on from them. What I'd like to do, if you wouldn't, if, if you wouldn't mind, is to pull that off the agenda for tonight, let us call a special meeting for later in the week when we have the actual final product for you. I just don't want you to approve something without, you know, we had talked about not, not making material changes. I think this, this may constitute a material change that you might want to, to discuss, and I just don't have it in writing yet to do that, so I would ask you to pull that one off if you don't mind.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On favor? opposed? Okay.
Then, then for the rest of your, for your consent agenda for tonight, you've got the adoption of minutes from your agenda workshop in your regular session, you've got a budget amendment to, for an insurance settlement for the truck that was destroyed during the, the snow removal, and we got to call for a public hearing for text amendments for flag signage, and those are the only items that you now have on the consent agenda for tonight.
Everybody agreed? Do we need to, do I need, do I get a motion, first of all?
Summished.
Okay. Anybody wish to discuss any of those three items? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We now move into the citizen comment on the new business, which would be the revisions to the Black Mountain Rental Facility Fee Schedule. So I open up the floor to anybody that they wish to speak to that. This is the fees that we charge for the Lakeview Center, for the soccer center. Not hearing, not seeing anybody?
Briefly go over it.
Go ahead, if you will go over that, Matt?
Sure. And so what, what, what we're proposing is the creation of an hourly rate for renting the auditorium at Carver Community Center. The fee will be the same as the rate for Gray Eagle. There's just been a high demand, as Casey has pointed out, for the Gray Eagle rentals, and this would give us an additional place to, to rent out, and so this implements a, the same hourly rate there, and it creates a hundred-dollar damage deposit for the hourly rentals at the Gray Eagle Arena. I think that's just a, that's just a wise move to kind of, it allows us to, to have less staff there to main, to monitor the work there, it kind of puts the people that are there in charge, and we hold a deposit, and they get that back when everything, when everything is okay. So those are the only two changes that we're requesting in the rental facility fee schedule at this time.
All right, does anybody have any questions about these, about these rental fees? As Casey was talking about tonight, as you'll see down here, the Gray Eagle, the fees there, we are running a little bit higher, we're running a thousand dollars apparently, and it looks like we may have what be close to two thousand, you think, Casey, for the year over expenditures? Okay. I'd like for the board to, and I don't know if, if we can go ahead and just pass this tonight, and then bring it up in budget discussions, but I think we really need to be seriously thinking about raising some of these fees in order to have a capital fund to replace that astroturf that's in there for the soccer. It certainly doesn't, it's in good shape now?
I would point out the fee, we, and I, maybe I'd said Gray Eagle a handful of times, the fees you're actually doing here tonight are just for Carver. We're using Gray Eagle's fee structure and adding Carver as somewhere else you can now rent. So the only thing we're changing for Gray Eagle is the deposit. Now, that doesn't mean...
Okay.
So during the budget process, we can take a look at all the fees and making sure that they...
Yeah, please make sure that you, that you bring that with, Casey, and see how that we can increase those.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Summished.
On any, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business?
We don't have any.
Ron?
Nothing.
Okay. Matt?
Nothing, or a motion.
Do we have anything from any members of the board that they would like to express at this time?
I would. I would first like to commend the folks who've come out tonight to support the source. Source is a business. They are a good business in the town of Black Mountain. It is unfortunate the situations that have occurred over the last year or two. I think the mayor made very valid points at the presentation when we first started the debate, not the debate, but opened up the citizen comments, that this board is in a very special predicament, and that we are not here, or we are not able to sit here tonight and say wrong has been done and we can right it. This board is not in that position to do that. There is a system that has to be followed, there are general statutes that have to be followed, there are procedures that have to be followed, and those are being followed. I thank all the citizens. I think it was almost five percent that was noted of the town population, who have sent emails, who have made phone calls, who have viewed their support. I have questions that I will be conferring with the town's attorney, that I will be conferring with the town manager on, that there are things that I feel that are very questionable. While that may have no bearing on changing anything as to where the procedure is now... While that may have no bearing on changing anything as to where the procedure is now, I'm looking for clarity for myself. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, I would. I'm gonna say first of all that I feel for the Maddens, the neighborhood, all the neighbors, town staff, and especially the town manager. And this whole process that we've been through, everybody's just been doing what they thought was their job. And I want to commend you, Matt, for doing your job in a professional manner.
Again, thanks for the civility. Thanks for the comments. I'm sure this board is gonna be discussing this further. Needless to say, this, please, please don't think that your comments tonight are gonna be taken as idle chatter. Everyone listen, because you noticed up here people were taking notes. This will be discussed, but for right now, unless there's anything else, I call this meeting adjourned.[1698.38]